This is just, sorry, now it's on.
All right.
Claire?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yes, I conveyed the board's invitation to Claire to take the position of town accountant. Claire, you had a question about the hours?
Yes. Because I am on, I work for the Sterling Municipal Light Department, I'm on the Worcester County, the Nass State Retirement. And therefore, I cannot work more than 960 hours a year. And what Kevin had originally scheduled was nineteen and a half hours a week, which would add up to more. So I could do it if it was sixteen hours a week. And then that would leave me with need to have more work for more work to be done or something extra. But as long as I stay under the 960, that would be fine.
Well, I just did some math, and 960 divided by 52 weeks is 18.46, so you could work eighteen and a half hours a week and still be fine.
Well, I, yeah, I would say seventeen, just to make sure. You know, to go right up to the 960, I'd get kind of nervous.
So you could do eighteen hours a week, no problem?
Yeah, probably. I just have to keep track of them.
Yes, but since you already have an idea of what you're doing, pretty close, you may have to learn. But I don't think we should, we'll have any problem with you working one hour less a week. I don't see much more problem. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're willing to work with you.
Okay.
Okay, what did you say, Gary?
If like, if like, it should be getting more, you know, so one week I don't work as many hours, have everything caught up anyways. You know, work with the schedule.
Gary and John, I think we're so close that it's fine. I don't, we can work on the hour issue, or she's getting close to it later on. I would move that we appoint Claire to the account position.
So moved.
So it's been motioned and seconded to appoint Claire as town accountant. Any discussion, you guys?
Nope.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Fan dryer, aye.
Mallory, aye.
Now I have to ask, can she start right away, or are we gonna have to try to, or is there gonna be a period of waiting in here?
I think she can answer that.
I'm available.
Okay. What we're gonna do is try and set up a date that she can be in, when Gail is in for a couple of times, maybe, that they can cross over and, you know, compare notes and get on board. So we'll talk about that further off camera, so to speak, but, you know, like, for instance, Gail is in tomorrow. So if, from, I forget, from nine till three or something. But we'll have a couple of days where they will both be here, so Gail can show her what she's been doing and Claire has the chance to ask whatever questions she has. So they overlap a little bit.
John, I see Greg has his hand up.
Sure, you want to unmute Greg?
Yep.
Greg, go ahead.
Did we lose Greg?
Greg?
He's there.
Greg.
No, he's unmuted. There you come.
Now he's muted again.
Must have changed his mind. Okay, let's move on.
All right.
All right. Education Committee, we have a little change in here. Mr. Garofalo has informed me that he will not be able to participate in the committee, but Bobby French has volunteered to serve on the committee. So we're asking if you would like to appoint Bobby French to the committee.
To replace the other one that's leaving?
Well, actually, she volunteered, you could look at it that way. She volunteered before I heard about him leaving, but that's fine.
Well, I understand, but so the group's gonna remain the same, the number?
Yes.
Okay. I would move that we appoint Bobby French to that committee.
Second.
Motion seconded to add Bobby French and to accept Mr. Garofalo's declining. Any discussion on that? I'm wondering, how many people are on that committee now?
John, it's gonna be the same amount because we, one person left.
No, I'm just curious, I don't know how many people are on there.
It's either eight or nine people.
All right. Well, all those in favor of appointing Bobby French to that committee, say aye.
Fan dryer, aye.
Mallory, aye. So good.
Okay, thank you. Marilyn Hallway was supposed to be here tonight, I'm looking to see if I see Marilyn here. I don't, I don't hear anything that's jumping out that looks like it might be kind of a shorthand name. Anyway, in your packets is a letter from Marilyn on behalf of the Lions. Lions have been meeting upstairs in the auditorium. It's a small group, and they are just asking, because they want to be more regular about it, if they can meet on Tuesday, April 13th, Tuesday, May 11th, and Tuesday, June 8th. All of nights from seven to eight PM, it's the second Tuesday of the month for about a half an hour. And they're asking permission from the select board, they will observe the distancing requirements, masking, and so on.
And where do they want to use?
They want to meet in the auditorium.
Upstairs?
Yes.
How would they get in?
She has a key to the front door.
Oh. Well.
I'm fine with that.
Where had they been meeting?
They have been meeting, they've met a couple of times upstairs already, but this is gonna become a more regular thing.
Right, did they used to meet downstairs in the church, or?
I don't know, John, that's a good question, they might have, oh.
Yeah, I was just curious myself, too, I don't have a problem.
Or the edit.
Well, Ruth French has her hand up.
Excuse me a second, I just gotta write something down here.
Sure.
Ruth, could you unmute, please?
Okay, I'm just curious as to how big the group is that's meeting because of the per person per thousand square feet. So depends on how large the group is that's gonna be meeting before you give them the okay.
I think she said it was only like six or seven people, it wasn't a large group. The maximum for that space, we've measured it, it's 1,054 square feet, so with ten per thousand, a lot of ten people.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure that we were inside those spatial limits.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
So the motion to let them use the auditorium with a maximum limit of ten people?
Yeah, okay.
That's a motion.
That's your motion, Bernie?
Yep.
So the motion is seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Fan dryer, aye.
Mallory, aye.
Celestia, aye.
Okay, thank you. With us this evening is Alex Olson, I'm gonna unmute Alex. Alex is here to talk about his proposed Eagle Scout project, and he has some materials to show you. And I think in order for that to work, I need to give him control of the meeting for a moment, so he can show you his PowerPoint presentation.
All right.
Sure.
Okay, so Alex. I'm making you the host for a moment, there you go.
Hello.
After. Here we go. So they can all see your screen.
Can everyone see my screen, okay?
Yes, looks great.
Okay, so I'm Alexander Olson. I'm in the eighth grade from ergance Regional High School. I'm fourteen years old, I'm a life scout working on my eagle, and I've lived in Phillipsville my whole life, and, yeah. So for my project, I'm trying to plan to build a picnic pavilion right behind the Phillipsville Police Station for people to use in the summertime, have picnics, small parties, scout meetings, baseball games, and other activities people can do outside. The shelter will be about sixteen by twenty-four feet. And I'm planning to begin this project in the middle of summer of this year, and hopefully have it completed in fall, in the fall. My shelter will be sixteen by twenty-four feet, like I said earlier. I'm planning to do a blue metal roof to match the police station. I'll have concrete footers for, in the ground for the beams and posts. I'll use p stone for the ground, or a possible concrete slab if it gets donated. And it'll be able to cover about three picnic tables. The location will be right behind the police station, like I said earlier. The police station is also very supportive of this project. I went to them earlier this year, and I talked to them, and they were very supportive, and they agree with the spot, and they really like the idea. This is another map of where I'm planning to build this shelter.
I'd say I like your presentation so far.
For my project, I have kind of a list of my orders, so I'm hoping I get, I'm hoping you guys approve this tonight. If you guys approve it, I'll go to the Scouts BSA and make hope they approve it. Then if they approve it, I will go to the CPA and request funding for my project. If CPA approval will come from the town meeting, which will be, yeah. Detailed project planning, so sizing, budget, all this stuff. I'll meet with the building inspector after that. I'll meet with the highway department to hope they will help with site preparation. And then I'll go to hopeful donors and get labor for my project. Then I'll do site preparation, and then I'll build and finish my project. My project will be about $7,000. Site prep will hopefully be donated, and labor will hopefully be donated also. These are some examples of the Bolton Picnic Pavilion. These are a lot bigger than the ones I'm planning to build, but they are designs and kind of what we're looking to do.
Yeah, I just got a curiosity, what size was that one that you just showed?
This one is about...
Twenty-four by thirty-five, I think.
It's about twenty-four by like thirty, thirty-five, somewhere in there.
Sure, thank you.
Yep. Are there any other questions or comments or concerns?
I have a question. Alex, is this something that you're just gonna oversee, or are you gonna actually be doing construction on it, like hands-on construction yourself?
I will hopefully be, I will be there helping and watching, and I'll also be there building hands-on with the people if I get donations and people coming to help build it.
We got a regular screen back, I don't know if that will be you or Kevin.
Stop share.
How do you get?
I don't know. Just in case there's questions from other people.
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Can't we leave it?
Looks like Dave Manti has a question.
Okay, Dave? Alex is gonna turn me back to the host.
Sure.
Maybe his dad can help.
I'm thinking Dave's volunteering already.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Dave, if you would unmute, please?
Okay, I mean, it looks like a good project, I'm just curious, I don't know where the septic system is for the police station. Is the leach field or the septic tank in the back, back there, or has anybody checked?
I'm behind the sheds on the side on the left.
It's down behind the shed, the police shed and the troop shed down on the left.
Okay, so that's far enough away, though. All right, I was just curious, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Personally, I think it's, it could be a nice addition.
Okay, thank you.
So you would need to get approval by us, and then by your leaders?
Yeah, I would need to go to the leaders of Scout BSA, and they would approve the project after you guys approve it, or if you approve it.
Sure. And I'm assuming that, you know, nothing would be started until everything was arranged? You know, I wouldn't want like something to be half-built.
Yeah, you would get everything arranged and sorted out and planned before we even started building or anything like that.
This is, this is Alex's dad. So part of the process will be once the project is approved by council and the troop itself, the further details of the project will help be vetted out. So he has to prepare an entire plan, project materials, funding sources. Once that's all approved by a representative to the town, you know, or back to this board, would be then when things would actually start on the actual project. So this is a pre-approval to continue work. Once everything is packaged and a real project, full project plan is put together, it will come back to the town.
Including the building permit?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that somebody like overseeing it from a structural point of view, so somebody... I mean, the volunteers are great, all that, you know, it works, but we want to make sure that whatever's built is, is, you know, good for the town, for the help.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the, would you call it a pre-plan?
Yeah, pre-plan, pre-approval.
Pre-approval of the pre-plan, I guess is a...
Well, I think it would be approval of the project.
I think he needs to come back after he has everything in place, was that my understanding?
Yes, yeah.
Given, we would give the okay for this project to...
We'll get, what he asked for was a pre-approval.
Oh, okay.
So when he has everything together, he's gonna come back and say, I got everything together, I got, you know, the the building inspector's fine, I got the donations, I got the approval from the Boy Scouts, and then we will give a final approval, that's my understanding?
Yes, that's what would happen.
So you're giving a preliminary approval?
Correct.
Okay.
My motion is to give them...
You're motioning to give pre-approval?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
So it's been motioned and seconded to grant pre-approval. We've had some discussion, is there any other concern? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Fan dryer, aye.
Mallory, aye.
Celestia, aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is reorganizing select board.
Okay, with my understanding that we do that at the annual election, I mean, I don't think we really need to change the board for two months, that's my feeling. Certainly open to discussion.
Well, I don't think I'm ready to be chair yet.
Come on, Gail.
Well, it's only two months, anyway, that's why I'm saying, what's two months? Is it even two months? And I believe in our, I believe our policy or whatever says at the annual election, I could be wrong.
What policy was that, John?
Well, I believe that we had passed, recently we had passed on because we weren't changing who was the chairman, and we thought it would be nice to change the chairman every year. So I, Kevin, I don't know, do you have that policy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in 2018, the board adopted some procedures, and part of that is Part Nine, which Organization of the Board, and it said the officers of the board would be elected annually at a meeting scheduled within a week of the annual elections. And they would elect a chairman, a vice chairman, and a clerk.
So that's, that's a policy that was voted in place from the selectmen already?
Yeah, September, wait a sec, September, approved by the select board, September 24, 2018, select board policies and procedures.
In 2008?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Two oh one eight.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a copy of that, I'd like to somehow see that.
Sure. Sure, you want me to, I can bring it up on the screen, if you give me a couple of minutes, it's just gonna take a few minutes to track it. Hang on a second. Let me think, what's the fastest way? Probably to the website. On a Phillips.
It's gonna take you a little while to find that, Kevin.
It'll take me a second, can we just... PHI, PS, S... Selectmen. See what I'm looking at right now, the town website?
Yeah, so it'll be in there in the selectman's policy.
Selectmen's policies?
Yeah.
Selectboard procedure.
I mean, I really see the point unless, you know, there was...
There you are.
Reason.
It's this section here, Bernie.
Yeah, I'm trying to read it.
Okay.
Who made this policy?
Board did.
Why would they make a policy like that?
There was a...
It's kind of controlling, like stopping any new people from coming.
It was allowing for new people to come on. See, what happened was, we had the same chairman for several years, and I believe that this policy was made so that we would, we would rotate the chairman. But at an annual election, not a replacement election.
And then if I drop down, Bernie, what, down to the bottom? If you look at the policies online, they all have a thing at the end that says, they're gonna keep going. There, approved by the board in the day.
Okay, that's gonna take me a little bit of time to digest that. Can we table this till our next meeting?
It's all right with me. John, I'm telling you, if you really want to change it, it wouldn't break my heart, a little bit of a slap in the face, but...
Well, it's not, the intention's not to slap you in the face, John, we're just, we're trying to make, and I'm not criticizing anybody individually, we're trying to make things like more fluid, move quickly, get things done, and everybody working on the same page, so I'll make a motion that we table that to the next meeting.
Second.
Second, it's tabled, all those in favor, say aye.
Fan dryer, aye.
Mallory, aye.
Okay, next item is, I'm sorry.
I don't know, Tom's stuck on his hand up.
I beg your pardon, sir. Ask to unmute, please.
I have a question in terms of the second section that says if a vacancy arises, then at the next regular selectment meeting, the select board is reorganized. It doesn't say when that vacancy arises. Kim left, there should have been reorganization right after that in terms of the word when Bernie got elected in. This is a very, very broad statement, there's no timeline on it, and I would assume personally that it might apply now. My own personal opinion.
Well, thank you, and unless Bernie wants to change, I think he wanted to think it over, and we were gonna table it. If he wants to change that, that's fine with me, but as it is now, we're still considering it, we just tabled it.
At this point, we tabled that, because I want to pull it up and read to those other policies too, and see how all this comes into play. And again, I want it to be fair, I'm not trying to jump and take anybody's spot or anything. The last thing that I need is more work, but I want to make sure that everything's fluid for the town and things are moving forward, so. I think by that, we tabled that, let's go on to this, the next one we have here.
Sure. Okay. Okay, next item is the transfer emergency power from CIO to elected select board members.
Okay. Not, what does this mean?
This is a Bernie item.
I know, Bernie, you mean this, the document that we, when we did declare the state of emergency? I know, Bernie, I mean, you mean this, the document that we, when we did the deck, uh, declare the state of emergency?
Correct.
I've been trying to get that canceled for a while.
So, what, and, and I understand, Gail, you, I, cause I've been listening to the meetings even before, uh, I was on the board. We, we're not trying, we don't wanna like, get rid of the emergency powers. But the person who's gonna take care of that is, what I'm asking is, is it's not that the, it's not gonna be the C I O, it'll be one of the selectmen, it can be the chair. Uh, but I wanna put the control back so that if notices go out for whatever reason, or something has to change, or the, uh, virus starts to grow again, we have to do other things, that it's, it's not, it's the selectmen that have the power, that we didn't give it to somebody else.
I agree with that.
Sure, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I, I think the whole point of that was, when it was made, was, uh, I mean, there was a lot of uncertainty at the time, and.
Under, John, I understand all those things you're saying, w- w- without question, but now where we are now, in, in, my motion would be to transfer the emergency powers back to the select board members.
Well, um, if we can do that without affecting our status and, you know, because we get monetary help, as long as we can do that, I, I don't have a problem with that, we can, yeah, I didn't obtain a motion saying as such.
Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll make the motion that we transfer the emergency powers back to the select board members.
Provided it doesn't affect our status.
Nope.
Oh, alright.
I'm gonna second that motion.
So the motion is seconded, uh, Mr. Speck would like to speak again.
Excuse me a second, I'm trying to get the motion down, just a second, please.
Alright.
Um, I'm muted.
Well, wait, just for clarity, you're not saying you wanna, uh, rescind the urgency order, though?
We didn't say that at all, we. Emergency order is, is, is still in until the governor lifts that.
I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
We're just transferring the emergency powers from the C I O to the selectmen.
Alright, Tom, what did you wanna, uh?
Well, I wanna interject that, um, we had a state of anir- emergency in Phillipsden and in the state eh, when we had the really, really bad ice storm. And the selectmen continued to run the town. I was very, very surprised personally that the selectmen handed over all their powers to the C I O at the time. And of course, you know, I wasn't gonna get into it, and it was just my own personal feeling. But the three selectmen that were on charge, in charge at the time, ran the town very, very efficiently. Uh, and worked everything really well. Uh, I see this as a plus for the town in terms of the selectmen getting back their, uh, their powers, their management powers. Of course, uh.
No, thank you.
Somebody might drive me over, under a bus, but I've stuck my neck out before.
I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen, though. Um, again, uh, this wasn't so, the selectmen didn't have the power anymore, this was like, if something happened to one of the selectmen, or if there was something that needed to be, uh, acted on, like, immediately, I, that was what the thought was at the time.
That's, John, we're not, John, we're not, we're not criticizing what happened at the time, but this is like Phase Four of the reopening?
I'm, I'm kinda answering down.
Okay, so this is motion on the floor, let's second it.
Sure. Um.
We act.
Without, is there any more discussion with us? I would say, uh, all those in favor of, uh, changing that emergency order, rescind, rescind the whole thing.
No, no, not, no, just.
Oh, I thought Gail.
Get the emergency powers from the C I O to the elected select board members. Just like it says, we just give power back to the selectmen.
All those in favor, say aye.
Fan Drier, aye.
Mallowan, aye.
Lefty, aye.
Before, before we go further, uh, I'd like to, uh, we, we've discussed this multiple times, I'd like to vote to return the cemetery commission to, to resume all pre-COVID mowing activity. Uh, so that they will go back to mowing these little squares all over and town common and everything else.
Gail, did you talk to them about that?
I know.
Uh, I didn't talk, well, I, I talked to, uh, members of their family, yes.
Well, let's, well, let's look into that and then have it on our agenda. I, I guess in a way, you could tie it into this last thing that you wrote, but.
Well, we should do it as a separate motion.
I know, I, I think, I should say, hold off on that if you don't mind.
What, 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 what's the purpose of holding off, though? Cause it's gonna start getting warm, they're gonna wanna be doing things.
It's not on your agenda, sir. It's a vote that's not on your agenda. It has, I've, we've talked about this multiple times and we just haven't voted on it. Well. Foley's. It's not on your agenda.
Okay, let's, 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 um, let, let, let's stop and can we put that on the next agenda?
Sure.
And do you have the wording that, that, um, Gail had wanted?
Um, I think so, I think I thought that, yes.
And I was just supporting what you said, Bernie, that, asking you how they felt about it, we don't, I don't think we know.
Well, they, they, they need to pick it back up at some point also, so. Wh- whether we did it tonight or next week, or, or the week after, I don't wanna let it go too far, the grass is gonna be growing.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, put it on, let's do that.
Okay, do we have an appointment?
Um, Bernie, it's your, it's your item, um, you wanted to appoint a janitor for the closed school and other buildings and appoint a caretaker of buildings, do you have somebody in mind?
I thought we had some applicants.
Um, we had the same applicants we had two weeks ago.
And they didn't wanna do the job, or?
It's, it's where it was two weeks ago, I haven't heard anything more.
Have, have we advertised for that, um?
It'll, it'll go in, you know, I'm gonna send something to tend to go in this week's, um, this month's, um. Well, actually, at the last meeting, Gerhard said he was gonna write the ad. So, I guess I'm waiting for him to provide the ad.
Okay, so.
Gonna provide the ad? Yes, at the last, you said you were gonna provide the ad for the custodian. I don't believe so, I've never.
Okay, okay, let, let, let's stop, we're not gonna get into arguments, how, how about, um, uh, Tim, can we still go into the newsletter?
I'm trying, hit him, I'm muted, hang on a second. Where's Tim? Tim must be way down here. Tim, could you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, if you give me something today or tomorrow, tomorrow or the next day, we can do it.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
So to the other members, to John and Gerhard, we'll have Kevin, um, have that ad drawn up tomorrow and submitted to the newsletter?
Yes, but it's gonna be for, for, uh, it's not a handyman throughout the town. It, it's for somebody who's just going to clean the floors and maintain the school. And the previous ad, it said nothing about the school at all. It was somebody to do anything that Kevin wanted, and that's not what we want.
Okay, but it says, and, it says in other buildings, do, we're gonna just restrict it to the school?
Well, we have people that take care of everything else. We, what we really need is a janitor for the school, we don't need somebody, a handyman, all around town.
So then we would write the ad for just that, then?
Just for the school?
Right.
Okay. I'm fine with that, so Kevin's gonna do the, um, put something in the newsletter. And then I had asked about appointing a caretaker of buildings, which I didn't realize that, uh, Rick Tenny is already the caretaker of buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then we don't need to appoint, um, a caretaker of buildings. Can we, um, let the people speak that have their hands up?
Yep. Um, would you like to start with first, Mr. Chairman?
Tom Speck, I think, had his hand up first.
Okay, Tom, you're unmuted.
I, um, I, I just wanna remind the selectmen that, uh, I believe there's a, uh, posted meeting for the selectmen tomorrow night, uh, to meet with the finance committee. And as in years pass, sometimes little things, uh, could be done then. So if there's an ad for this, uh, janitor, uh, maybe you could approve it tomorrow night. Um, like, like I said, we're meeting jointly. Um, and I also wanna reiterate what's already been said. We have a person that does, uh, janitorial kind of work already in the town buildings. This, I understood personally, that this janitor is gonna work at P M S. We start loading on other things, uh, before you know it, we're gonna have to pay him more. It's strictly, as far as I'm concerned personally, it's P M S building, um, walkthrough, and it doesn't have to be some rocket science either. As long as the person knows how to push a damp mop or, or regular groom, I mean, that's about all it's gonna need over there in terms of, uh, he doesn't have to, uh, rebuild the boilers, we're studying all these in the previous ad. Uh, it looked like an ad that just showed up for Franklin County Tech for a janitor.
Sure, that's fine, I, I'm, Ruth and, and Rick had their hands up. Uh, I would like, uh, Mr. Tenny's, uh, but I think Ruth's hand was up first.
Okay.
Could we hear Ruth first?
Okay, Ruth, would you unmute, please?
Yep, okay, that, that's fine. I just wanted to reiterate that the funding that we voted at, at the special town meeting was fifteen thousand dollars maximum. And that's strictly for a janitorial services at the school, at P M S. So the funding can't pay for anything but P M S. Because that's what the article is, is for, is the P M S.
That's what we want, thank you.
Yep.
Rick?
Hey, wait a second, Rick, would you unmute, please?
Okay, I'm, just a quick question, uh, going backwards a little bit. Um, on, as far as the cutting of the grass with the cemetery, that, I don't think that was anything that was ever voted on to stop cutting the grass, or does it actually have to be voted on to have them start again?
It was a decree by the C I O at the time.
But it wasn't technically a vote?
We'd have to look back, I, I don't.
I, I don't think it was a vote, it was just a decree.
So I, I ju- I just didn't think that if it wasn't being voted on, that it had to be on the agenda.
Right. Well, I don't think we need to mow the lawns yet.
No, I just wanted to raise the point, that's all.
Sure. Um, oh, Linda, Linda, I'm sorry.
Linda, would you unmute, please?
Yep, thank you. I was referring to the note about the custodian for the school. And what you guys had said was for Kevin to write a simple ad for the janitor at the Phillips Memorial School. Um, it, it wasn't supposed to include anything like resumes and things like that, which we haven't did. And it was only for the school, and I don't believe it said anything about cutting the lawns either. And maybe not even legal, is that jugging? And then you guys, what was supposed to approve it, it wasn't posted. That's in my note, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we have, uh, Karen Foley here, I mean, uh, she could probably answer some of that, or Garrett could.
Hands not even up. What do, what do you want her to answer?
Well, and you guys to the mowing.
Oh, we're back to the mowing? I thought we were gonna wait and have put it on the agenda.
Let, 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 hold on a minute, let, I, I think we can clean this up easy. Kevin, you, you ordered the, um, cemetery guys not to do any mowing or anything because of the.
Bernie, I, I, I told them not to do it, it wasn't a decree and it wasn't an order.
Whatever, whatever we call it.
Please, please don't put words in my mouth, and please let me finish my sentence before you start jumping in on me. I told them not to do any more mowing of, of parks and playgrounds, yes.
Okay. So, we just voted to take that type power away from you and return it back to the selectmen.
No, no, that wasn't, that was something, wait a minute. I'm confused here.
That wasn't the emergency powers that you were granted.
Right, you gave me extra powers then, you never took it away from you. What it said in there is that I shall have additional authority, now you've just removed, removed it, the board never lost any authority.
Okay, so we just took that, whatever, we just brought it back so the selectmen make the decision. And now, and now the selectmen can make the decision, right now, that the cemetery can continue to do the mowing as they have in the past.
Right. Yeah, right. You could always make that decision, you never lost any authority.
Yeah, never.
Okay, so.
Have impact to it.
So, we're all, we're all agreeing that the cemetery can stop mowing wherever they mow again?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't think we need a vote, as long as it's recorded in the meet, we're all agreeing on that right now. So, we don't need to go there anymore then, okay?
That was under those powers that they would get canceled out.
Okay, can we, we can move on?
So, so is that an agreement, that we all agree?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a recorded meeting, you know, so, if somebody wants to look it up, they can look it up.
Sure, look it up all night.
Okay. Then, uh, that, uh, that article that Kevin's gonna write, can it please just state a janitor for just the school?
That's what we said already.
Oh, no.
Okay, is there any way that we can look at that before he puts it in the ad, in the paper? At the last meeting, Gerhard, you offered to write that, it was in the video, I don't know what Linda's notes say, those are her personal notes. Video, you said you were gonna prepare it, so it would be done right, as you said. So, why don't you just prepare it and then you'll be happy?
We, we've already made a decision to board a selectman, discussed this a few minutes ago. Kevin is gonna write the, the ad and put it in the newsletter.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it, that's the end of it, let's, let's stop talking about it.
Okay.
That's a directive, Kevin, you need to do that.
Right, I understand that, but I also.
Thank you, thank you, let's move on, let's move on.
Okay, I was hearing that I was gonna have to show it to you, so I don't have to show it to everybody.
As long as it says, uh, janitor for the school, for Phillips Memorial School.
Okay.
Alright, what was next?
Uh, text use of school for officers, treasurer, and accountant.
So what I'd like to do is, is get the, um, the accountant and the treasurer out of Kevin's office or that space. Or get Kevin out of that space and have the accountant and the treasurer over there, I don't think they should all be in the same area. Uh, but I'd like to see it get done yesterday. I was, I was over there this week, that thing's up, that office is a mess, I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed in, in Phillipsden in general that w- we have like a, a trap over there, there's wires hanging down, there's walls cut out, there's people in there trying to work. You can't talk to anybody without somebody else listening. It, it, it's not a good situation. Um, and, and I think we should, if we have the school available, doesn't look like there's gonna be children over there for some time. If we have to move the accountant and the treasurer at some point, so be it, we move them back, we figure something out, but. I, I would say we should utilize that school, um, do something with it instead of just let it set, sit empty.
Right, so would they be going into the old section so that, uh, the, uh, other groups could still use the new section?
We, we can discuss that, uh, Gerhard, I haven't really, I didn't go that far.
Okay. And we should also discuss this with the, uh, school options committee.
Could do that. Doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be finalized tonight, but we should, we should work on this, so, you know, in, in a few weeks, we. So, you know, in, in a few weeks, we can make a decision.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, I thought that the office, we, we were gonna petition that so that there were offices in the town hall for these people. Um, I'm not sure what the holdup was, wiring or a carpenter or whatever.
Well, I, I, I had gone there several times and I was looking at it and I was waiting for the wall to be finished. There was a stud missing and I have to run a wire through that stud. And it, and it's, I can't do that without a stud, so until Kevin was, Kevin was gonna let me know when it was done, so I've been waiting for that.
All right.
Can, can we send it to that school, uh, use committee and see what, um, y- y- you know, see, see where we can place the people in the school that will make the most sense?
Yeah, I don't remember how many offices were over at the school.
I think there's about eight classrooms or so, six or eight classrooms in the old section that can be used. We already have one for, uh, Don Smith. I think it is.
It can be a classroom. It, it could be a classroom, you know, they could change it into an office. We can move the seats or whatever. Is there anything in there?
Yeah.
So furniture?
What's that?
Do they have phones in each room that are functioning?
Oh, that could be easily added.
Um, Richard Digg, head up, he's a member of the committee. Mr. Chairman?
What?
Richard Diggan is a member of the committee. He has his hand up.
Sure, that's beautiful.
Richard, would you unmute, please?
Hi.
Hey, how you doing?
I just wanted to comment on, uh, moving, uh, staff personnel into the school building. Uh, I want everyone knowing, you know, that, uh, this committee, this, uh, education option committee fully intends to return children to the Phillipsville Elementary. Uh, and if the building is used for another purpose, I'd like some kind of promise in writing from the board of selectmen that it's temporary. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Tom, I was gonna say, sorry.
I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get that down. Excuse me a second. Okay, Tom, could you unmute, please?
Um, I'd, I'd like to point out before we start filling Phillipsville Memorial School and then have to unfill it when we start having students over there. I think that we have more than enough room in the town hall upstairs. You go through the door to go in the, the upstairs to the left-hand side, there's more than enough room to put a twelve foot away from the wall, and I'm using my architectural engineering degrees, and put up two rather nice large, uh, temporary offices with the walls that you screw them into the floor. And, and now they even have doors for those walls. And on the other side, on the right-hand side of the door, there's also room for at least two offices there. Um, I applaud the selectmen for wanting to take their office back. Um, and, and, um, so I, I think before we start talking about, uh, moving over to PMS, and I was hoping maybe some other people from the committee, I see them here, would have spoken up that, uh, you'd, you'd look at and consider the upstairs. Now, I know we talked about using the upstairs or, or the hall or whatever you want to call auditorium, um, for meetings and stuff, uh, larger meetings, but still, you're not cutting that much square footage off if you put, uh, two or four offices along the back wall with doors. And I know they now come and you can have a door on your, on your cubicle. They may be totally quiet, but assuming the kind of people that would be up there, would say the treasurer and the accountant, uh, they would probably wanna be talking back and forth to each other anyway.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, one interesting, uh, what's the status of Wi-Fi, phones, fire alarms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that when the school became ours, the, uh, near Gansett, uh, turned all that stuff off? Um, and the other thing you gotta remember is our emergency management person over there is utilizing two offices. Cause the principal had a, um, conference room in the back room and she had her office in the front room. So maybe you could squeeze someone into that facility, whereas he's not in there, uh, twenty-four seven.
Sure. Um, Bernie?
Yes.
See, this is part of what the law has been. Everybody has their own idea of how we should handle it. We're gonna have to make some decisions amongst the board, you know, take all this input and decide how we want to go. Um, uh, I think Dave Nanty had his hand up. Maybe he's got the solution.
Hey, would you unmute, please?
I was just curious. What happened to their old offices in the annex? Did those get backfilled by other departments?
Uh, planning board and the C B A have their old office.
Oh, so they're, so those offices are occupied. Okay, thank you.
I see Tom Dowst, who's a member of the committee, has his hand up.
Yeah, he's on that committee. Or I think Linda is too, but.
Yeah. Um, would you unmute?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for, uh, unmuting me there. So, uh, the education option committee actually put together a letter and sent it to you folks on the select board. One of the things that we're asking you guys to do is to actually stabilize PMS. And I've had discussions with people in, of course, there are some concerns about the building, the roof, um, in particular, the air handling system or air ventilation system. And then, uh, it's also been discussed about, uh, sprinklers in certain areas of that building. But I think that we should, before we move anybody in there, maybe before we put the pot in front of a horse, we stabilize that building for, first, or make a plan to, and then, you know, take it from there. Uh, I thi, I think people are kinda getting concerned that people are gonna move in there, but I think people can get moved in there and then get moved out if we are gonna put kids in there. That's what I have to say.
Sure. Thank you. How about Linda?
Hey, give me a second just to break this down. Okay, Linda, unmute, please.
Um, hi, thanks. Um, yeah, there is two, two offices in the principal's area. That would be definitely enough. And also, um, the annex, why would we move off the county stuff and all the treasury stuff when maybe the planning board and C B A can use a room over at the, in the emergency management area? Especially the planning, the way they would have hands on eyes on that building and see if anything was going on. Just a thought.
The planning board doesn't, isn't there every day?
Right. That would be a good place for you.
But they've also already moved.
Also what?
They've already moved.
Well, we, we, we've half moved.
Only half moved. God hope you have moved over to the school, John. It's all nice over there.
Thank you. Um.
Ju, ju, just, I, I just wanted to say something. First of all, if, if, if we move people over to, um, the Phillipsville Memorial School, it'll be a, a, a temporary basis unless we can't get the children back into that, uh, school. So if something happens that this, this committee can get the kids going back to the Phillipsville Memorial School, we'll address the issue and, and move the people that are over there out. Um, so that's not, I'm not, I'm not saying permanent, but what I'd hate to do is see like the school get no use for the next three, four, five years. And, and, um, as we all know, when water's not running, heat's not running, uh, things, then the buildings become less valuable and, and they deteriorate quicker. So, um, I don't think we can go to the townspeople and say like, hey, you know what? We wanna spend a half a million dollars on a roof and HVAC units and, uh, and guess what? There's nobody in there. Um, we're gonna be looking a little bit foolish, but, uh, and as far as the planning board office at the annex, I don't have a problem if the accountant and the treasurer went back there or they moved us somewhere else, but we need to make space for everybody.
Yep.
That's fine. The, the planning board meets, uh, twice a month. It's not like, you know, I mean, we had no place to meet before and now we do. It doesn't matter to me if it's in the annex or over at the school.
I feel the same way.
So, um, Richard Digg, uh, you wanna add to this? Is that what? Just another, can you unmute, uh, Richard?
Yep. Here we go. Okay. He needs to unmute himself.
Diggan.
Richard? Try unmuting yourself?
Ah, there we go. Now I can't. Uh, I wasn't getting the proper. I just wanted to say thank you for reiterating that it would be temporary. Um, and again, I want to reiterate that we fully intend to return children to that school. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that there are grants available um, for exactly the kind of work that we are proposing be done to the building. Due to COVID, there's, uh, lots of air handling type of grants available. So with the, the proper work, it shouldn't cost the town all that much money. Um, the third thing is completely off topic. Bernie, could you turn your computer down just a little bit? Uh, every time you don't speak, or I'm sorry, yeah, every time you don't speak, there's a terrible echo. When you do speak, it's not there. You can't tell. It happened to me the other day. I think if you just turn it down, just a couple clicks, it'll help a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, where are we? I, I, we tried to turn my computer down the other night and it wouldn't work.
Sure. All right. Well, I mean, I'm not sure where we would start first. Do we want to just, the planning board now move their cabinets and all the stuff from the annex over to the school or leave it as it is for now and revisit where everyone is going to go? Maybe we should have a meeting, like a workshop, where we would discuss locations?
I think that would be a good idea.
Good idea.
Let's leave that or we'll have a meeting to discuss locations and, and look at the feasibility of, of, you know, what is the best place to do?
Okay.
Could we have a timetable?
Well, I mean, what's next Wednesday? Do we have anything scheduled?
Let's schedule, why don't we schedule, um, why don't we schedule a selectmen's meeting or have a workshop like in, in the, uh, selectmen's meeting?
Sounds good. I'd say next Wednesday, the thirty-first, we have a, uh, office location workshop.
Okay, so are we all gonna meet at the school?
Oh, you mean, no. No, I thought we would have strictly discussed that, spend our time. Um, I mean, I don't want everybody that's here all go meet at the school.
Well, that way we could go in and, and look at the places, figure out which one, what can go where.
I don't know. I, I would think, I, I know what the place looks like. Uh, uh, I don't know. What do you, Bernie, you think that we need to meet at the school first?
I, I think I might just go over there and, and.
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest, that.
Scope it out.
Yeah, if you, gentlemen, if you meet at the school, it'll be a public meeting. It'll have to be open to the public and then we have an issue about.
I know, but we, Kevin, we can go individually and then we could just have a regular meeting.
Right.
A Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
That's the better idea.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Cause we can discuss that and then if other business comes up, we can handle it too. Let's just have a selectmen's meeting. It'll be a short one, next Wednesday night and we'll discuss this where we, and maybe we'll continue it till later on, seeing, uh, depending what happens.
Sure. Sounds good to me.
Okay?
Yeah.
And in the meantime, if we can each go over there individually and brainstorm a little bit or, or be thinking, somebody from the audience might email us after or make a comment and say like, hey, I've been thinking you guys could do this, or, or even Kevin, he, he knows the, the situation we're in, so.
Okay, sure. That's a good idea. Um, uh, I'd like to keep moving, but let's hear from Tom Speck.
Yep.
Tom, if you would unmute, please?
I was surprised. I expected maybe some other hands to go up. But I guess I'll address it. The, uh, educational, uh, options committee has chosen to, to meet on the thirty-first. Now, um, it would be a conflict in terms of, uh, two departments meeting together. The other thing is, is I believe we were sharing the, uh, selectmen, uh, Zoom address. And so I don't know how that would work out. Um, maybe, uh, the selectmen should have it at their regular meeting, uh, the next regular meeting and have the workshop, um, open to the public.
But I thought you said, oh.
Thirty-first is the next regularly scheduled and I, and anybody on the committee can, uh.
Kevin, I mean, Tom, didn't you say that you have a meeting the night of the thirty-first?
No, the educational option Phillipsville Memorial School Committee has a meeting that night, I believe. Tom, you wanna address that? Richard?
What is, it doesn't, wait a minute. If you're having a meeting that night, then.
And finance committee. Finance committee is having a meeting on the twenty-fifth, April first. It will probably schedule two more and will be done, hopefully.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't, why did you have a problem with the selectmen meeting on the thirty-first?
Because, well, I'm speaking up as a member of that committee.
That's fine.
We, okay, so let's understand. I'm speaking up as a member of the educational options committee and we scheduled our next meeting for the thirty-first of March at seven o'clock.
What time? I'm sorry.
Seven o'clock. And personally, I'm wondering, seeing as we were borrowing the selectmen's Zoom address and, uh, passwords and so on, uh, it's, there's gonna be a conflict.
I don't think that's a problem.
That shouldn't have any effect.
I know. I, I don't think that's a problem. Um, I, I think Jim Haley has an answer to that, but Linda's had her hand up for a while. Probably getting, she's getting tired. So let's hear from Linda first.
Hey, Linda, if you'd unmute, please?
It was, it was great ecstasy. Thanks, John. Um, I, I, whoever goes over to the school, remember this, no copy and machine. There's no phones and there's no internet. So that's gonna impact all of you guys. Including the treasurer and accountant, that'd really impact.
That's why I thought a good workshop meeting to brainstorm this.
Right.
So, Tim Haley's got a, he's got the solution.
And would you unmute, please?
I did hear Bernie said that if you, um, had a short meeting just to discuss that, you would, um, be able to do that probably about six o'clock and then get it all done. And that way the education committee could have their meeting at seven o'clock, you know, twenty-four hours in a day.
I don't have a problem with six, but I think some other people do.
I do.
Sorry.
All right. Um.
How about next Tuesday, John?
Tuesday? I don't have a problem with Tuesday.
How about you, Bernie?
I'm fine.
So can we schedule this thing for next Tuesday at seven?
That would be the brainstorming of position of locations. Yeah.
Works.
Does that work for you, John?
I'm sorry, what?
Does that work for you next Tuesday?
Tuesday at seven, yes.
Seven o'clock. Let's just, let's just put it on the agenda, have a regular selectmen's meeting. And then if something else comes up, we can deal with it and then we can
Then then we won't interfere with whatever's scheduled the thirty first.
Right. And then and then we can move by in case um some of these other things we can, if we can't deal with them in a timely fashion tonight, we could just move to next Tuesday?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Gary, for uh suggesting that.
I know. I don't know what the taboo of Tuesdays would be.
John, can you just, can you, as chair, you can just call the meeting for next Tuesday or do you want us to?
I thought we did.
I'm just saying, as chair, you you can just do it as chair or do you want to vote?
Uh, as a chair, I'd say let's listen. Uh, we should have a selectmen's meeting on Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Okay, that's that's good enough.
Okay.
All right, so where where are we on this list? Should we?
Okay, yeah, six. We're on. Sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Painting the town hall.
Okay, the the bid for painting the town hall is on the street. It's going out to eleven firms. Um, it includes the incidentals about that Bernie was asking about the annex front doors. Repairing the footsteps, um I refer to to uh Rick Tenny on that. He can fill you in on that. He started work on it. Um, it's partly done, but I mean, Rick can can give you more update on that.
Is Rick here still?
Yes, I think he is. Rick, could you unmute, please?
Uh, yes, we we did start that repair uh back in the fall, but the weather turned on us. Uh, we should be able to get back on that very soon, like in the next week.
That'd be great.
Right.
Okay, so I want to step back. I want to step back about the painting.
Yep.
Do we have like a a timeframe like in place?
The bids are due April seventh. Um, I think we gave them until like um a a window of sixty days or so that they could get it done um in the spring. So they would start like late April or May to June.
That would be good.
You know, you can't get it started too soon because of the weather. We want it to be, you know, good weather.
I could have did, I could have painted that night. I could have painted that whole thing this week.
Yeah, well.
I'm just kidding.
I know. And Bernie, the problem has been people have, they weren't blocking to bid on this thing. Hopefully we get a good turnout this time.
I did make sure, I sent it out to those eleven people and I made sure, Bernie, you mentioned Davis and I made sure it went to them.
Okay.
Where is that music coming from?
That's what I wanted to talk to.
Oh, sorry, that's gonna, that's
With the fincom, somebody's hacking in.
Karen Foley's had her hand up for a long time. Can we hear from Karen?
Karen, would you unmute, please? Put John back in.
Um, I think you already addressed this, that the the paint on the wall is the best paint job I've seen in a long time on a major building. The paint has to be sealed. The paint is really good. Perhaps Bernie's already brought the information for us to find out what company it is that to make sure we could have passed in them. That was all I had to say.
Okay, thanks. I didn't catch all of that. Did you name the company or?
She's talking about the brand of paint that they used at the library?
Oh, I see, okay. All right, and Mr. Stack.
Okay, Tom.
Um, I'm gonna bring this up again as I have in the past. Is all that paint that we bought and has been stored and been stored for many years still good? Or are we gonna have to buy more paint?
I would guess those people bidding are probably gonna provide the paint. I don't know if I'm comfortable using the paint that was bought, how many years ago?
Four. I defer to Rick on that. I put it, we did put it in the bid that we had some paint available, but I'll defer to Rick on that.
Um, yeah, I did. I did check with Sherwin-Williams where we bought the paint and it was a good quality paint. Um, and unfortunately, where it's been four or five years ago, he said, you're really not gonna know until you open the paint. Uh, it's either gonna have a very nasty uh, you know, uh mildewy smell to it or it's gonna be perfectly fine. And it's it's a shame because that, we paid a lot of money for that paint.
Sure, and uh I don't see the problem with opening it up and checking because um nobody, we're not gonna be able to take it back.
Correct. I I would still, I would still wait until it's time to paint it for what it's worth.
Okay. All right, does that satisfy I?
Um, somebody had to hand back. Dave?
David, you
Sure, let's hear from Dave.
Dave Manti? Dave, would you unmute, please?
He's looking for his paintbrush.
Okay. Where is he bouncing around? Hold still. David, try to unmute again.
Okay.
Catch.
All right, there it is. Thank you. John, that was kind of the idea. I was gonna say, can the townspeople actually do, if they got together and say the front of the annex, can, are they allowed to paint it anymore on our own or is that gonna be prevailing wage and?
That's a good question, because I know that there was a group of us that did the scraping over at the library and that seemed to be okay. I don't see why painting would be different.
I mean, the annex isn't, doesn't look like that big of a job. You're only gonna do the front of it. The roof is, you know, ninety percent of the building.
The second floor of the town hall is a problem, though.
Well, yeah, I was just focusing on the annex. I mean, I have a small bucket van that I can vol, I mean, I I could do the upper portion, you know, with the bucket van and, you know, the scraping and the painting, but I didn't know if we could volunteer or is that against the, you know, some kind of rule that
Well, we we should certainly look into it because I know that there was a group of us that did work at the library and it was all volunteered.
But now that the bid process is out, I don't know if that would create an issue if they're gonna bid on all.
Well, it's something we can look into.
Listen, guys, I listen, I I do construction for a living.
Yeah.
Let, get the bids, let somebody else do the painting.
Okay.
There's all kinds of issues. If 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 someone works, volunteers or whatever, and they get a chip of paint in their ride, they're coming after the town. If someone says, oh, jeez, I think I got lead poisoning because there might be lead paint on that building, they're coming after the town. Let the people who have the licenses and you have to be certified now to do painting, believe it or not. If there's lead paint on it, there's certain precautions they have to use and stuff like that. Don't, they're, they're gonna have the insurance. They're gonna have the RRP card, the stuff. Let them deal with it. And as far as the paint does, if I was painting a building, I wouldn't warranty the paint job if I didn't supply the paint. Um, I'm almost thinking if somebody wants to use it and stand behind it, that's fine. But I'm thinking if they use their own paint, we can auction the other stuff off and just cut our losses.
Good idea.
Linda Langton has her hand up and
I'm here from Linda.
Linda, would you unmute, please?
We lost her.
Nope, wait a second. Mute. If you could unmute Linda.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, that's great. I got a message saying the host was not allowing participants to unmute, so that's why the delay. Um, I just need it clarified if the town hall has been tested for lead paint.
Um.
Inside, yes.
All right, no, I'm I'm talking about the exterior of the building.
Why would you want to do that?
Well, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the historical society who has a similar building with similar paint. And we've been given the message that because there's lead paint involved, we can't have just any old painter do the painting.
The the painter's gonna know that. They have to be certified. There's all, there's classes they can take. You have to get certified. Um, I actually have an RRP license, so I I'm familiar with the process. Let, that's why I said let the painters uh deal with it. I don't think anybody has to be a rocket scientist to figure out that they made lead paint up until the nineteen seventies. Um, it was certainly painted before nineteen seventy. So let the people that are professionals do that work and 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 they'll take care of it, but you try to do it on your own, you're gonna get yourself in trouble.
Oh, no, I was not at all suggesting anybody do it on their own. I'm just wondering if the paint, uh, the painting project will have to follow all of those protocols for lead paint abatement.
Let let, let the people who are gonna paint it do the um, you you know, do do the work. They're licensed. They're insured to do that type of work. Don't, don't involve yourself in in somebody else's operation.
I don't know what you mean by that, Bernie. I'm just asking for information so that the historical society can learn and benefit from what the town hall is is going through. That's all.
Well, I I guess what we could do is, Linda, is after we have fine and and we approve a contractor or approve a bid, I should say, um, we we could pass that on to you and they'll probably be willing to work with you at the uh, you know, at 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 your building down there on State Road.
Okay, that would be great. We definitely would be appreciative of uh being kept abreast of that information. Thank you.
Okay.
See, Tim Haley had his hand up.
Let him, let him hear him.
Tim, would you unmute, please?
Okay, yes. Um, right in the bid specs, it does say there is lead paint present. Lead paint removal questions must be taken, but extensive abatement is not required. Contractor, contractor must be certified lead removal. So that is right in your your bid proposal, but then also you have the the top coat paint for exterior wood surfaces. The town will provide to the contractor. So I think there may have to be some adjustments to this bid or they would have to specify what you want, they want you to buy for it, I guess. So, so those two things are in there, but um, so like Bernie said, they probably want to supply it to be able to warrant it. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Hmm.
Okay.
Can we table this for ne, for just further discussion for next week?
Well, we we can move on because he said he advertised and we're waiting for a question.
Let's just wait and see.
Right.
Okay. Okay, um, next item. Discuss and get quotes for library new roof and funding.
I I had a, I got a call from Dan Sandin. Uh, he's got uh quotes coming in. They were supposed to be in tonight. They didn't come in, but they will, he will have them by the end of the week. So uh I I would like to ask to uh table this one for the week as well.
Fine with me.
Good idea.
Okay, so you want this table to next Tuesday?
Sure.
Okay, and the other one, the painting one as well?
No, the painting one will wait till you get your bids in after April seventh or something like that.
Okay, wait till bids. I'm just trying to keep track here.
Yep.
But this one, you want to wait till Tuesday? Just so I can mark these. Okay, discuss well for library and annex.
Okay, I had some, uh, and I know Dan was um maybe hopeful to have another well put in for the library annex. There was a question about um septic systems, how close they were, if it can be done. Um, and and then somebody had asked me, why don't we just dig the lines up and replace the lines and use it the way that we're using it now instead of drilling a new well? Um, i- is there a reason why we want to do that?
Well, my understanding is that it goes under the huge foundation of the church and and the and the weight of that church is crushing or or damaging the well line over time. So they've already had one crushed spot in the yard. Uh, and so uh you're originally the uh town, I think, owned the church uh and that's why it's all connected, but uh now I think we're separating that out or have done it and that's why it needs its own uh supply.
Gear?
Yeah.
But do you know where the well is at the church?
No.
The reason why I ask is because you said it was crushing the line, the foundation of the church and I'm I'm assuming that the well is outside of the church. So the line would be outside of the church that we dig a trench to go over to the uh, that's my thinking now. That doesn't mean there's not a well inside the church, because I've seen that too. But ma- maybe Tim, Timmy might be able to answer this.
Yeah, I see Tim's got his hand up.
I'm here from you.
Yes. Yes, the um, the well is just to the west side of the church, right in front of the west door, just outside the wall there on the lawn. And the water line does run completely around the outside back of the church, down along the backside and just in front of the gas tank at the church. And then at the corner of the annex, it goes up into the, into the packing lot somewhere. And
I stand corrected.
So it it isn't going under the foundation though, but uh, I think that there was, when they put the septic system in for the church,
Yeah.
they had to make some adjustments to it. And so they might have put some connectors in along the way, which are causing, I think, might have been some of the problems, but also where it gets pee off and go to the library, the annex, and also it used to go down to the parsonage, which is Ron Pratt used to go down to there also. And so when it was set off for each one, it probably wasn't completely renewed at the time. So there's no problem with supplying water to the annex and the library for the amount of use that they get. Uh, there's not that much, plenty of water. The only time we run out is when there's a break and it runs forever. So the water's fine. We have it tested. And the church doesn't have any problem at all continuing to let it run and use.
My thinking is if we, if we put a new well in, we still need to dig up to put new lines in. So why not just dig it up and put new lines in now without the well?
I thought that was the original intent.
No, the discussion's been all along to put a new well in separate for those town buildings.
Uh, I thought Rick Tenny, you talked about just fighting the bullet and replacing the line.
What does Rick Penny think about this?
Yeah, what's here? From Mr. Penny.
Rick, would you unmute?
Okay. We have dug that up several times, and Tim, Tim is right. I believe the line comes down the left side of the church, around the back of the church, heads over towards the annex. And I don't think it runs right along the propane tank. It takes off in the driveway, kind of a weird direction, and it was probably due to the septic, but my thought from the beginning, which is what I thought the original idea was, was to replace the line. And then there was talk, again, about putting in a well as well. I guess that would be up to you guys, but if you did do anything, I would highly recommend putting in a brand-new line and maybe possibly casing it in something instead of just a black polyline, so that you wouldn't have to deal with it again.
Sure.
But there is, there is an option of an artesian well. I know the the septic tank for the library is directly behind the library. And I think the only place that you'd be able to put an artesian well would be in the packing lot of the annex.
Where's the septic system for the annex?
Right, right now, the system for the annex is the same one for the library.
Good.
Which that's a different problem all in itself.
Right. What about, there used to be a high salt content up here. Is that no longer an issue?
That I don't know. I guess you'd have to speak to Isaac. Kevin, I believe, has the well, the water test in the selectmen's office. I don't know if he's ever looked at them.
Yeah, I have the water test stuff, and Isaac told me they were fine.
Okay.
For that well, I mean, I'm just wondering about a new well, if we would run into problems.
The, if I can speak one more time, the church well, when we tested, we don't have any problems with a there is a little bit of a sodium content, but not excessively high. I know that Karen Gergen's well has real high, and then the life, the church, no. The town hall has a high level, but for some reason, the church doesn't have the same problem.
Yeah, the hand pump, the hand pump well at the town hall has high sodium content.
Right. All right. I'm guessing Ruth has something, I mean, wait, Karen was first, I believe. Karen Foley again?
Okay, would you unmute, Karen?
I'm just wondering, does the church, the church pump the only, that pumps the water to the building? And is that kind of stepping back and having the church pay for the pumping electricity for the water?
No.
I don't think so. But it's something to look into. But I think Tim has the answer to that, but let's hear from Ruth and Tom Speck. Ruth first.
Ruth, would you unmute, please?
Yep. Okay, so you know, being kind of involved over there at the annex, I have to say that the annex in the library, because we're hardly ever occupied, draw very little water. I can't see putting in maybe a $20,000 well when you could spend a few thousand to fix all the lines. Because I know that the church has said we could, you know, replace the lines and we'd be good. And the other thing, granted, we're talking, we're talking late well at the moment. However, there's a huge septic issue with the annex. The, it freezes every winter. So that's a whole nother issue. But, you know, let's try to minimize how much we spend and think realistically that you know, a few thousand dollars to put in new lines versus what, 20, 25,000 for a new well?
You're correct, Ruth. That's why we had thought line originally.
We don't use any water.
Right. Okay, Mr. Speck.
Would you unmute, please?
I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, I am in agreement with Ruth. I think if we can solve this problem for the next hundred years and put in the proper-sized pipes and the right material, and maybe brass connections, stainless steel clamps, because I've had experience with that, I think it's the best way to go. If we, if the decision is to put it in a well, I don't know, you're gonna be able to get the setbacks from the road, setbacks from here, setbacks from the septic, et cetera, et cetera. And you might end up running into a salt problem because of all the, there was salt there.
That was my point.
Finally, all this is, is good faith. And I'm a, I'm a big believer personally in good faith. But I think at some point in time, to protect the church and to protect the town, and I think there should be a real, simple agreement in that if the pump burns out, we pay a portion of it. If something happens, we pay a portion of it. Guarantee the church that would, the town will be a good neighbor and help them out if they're well, even to the point that if something happens and it should go dry sometimes, we pay a portion of having a new one dug.
Sounds good. Now, Tim can answer that or speak to that. Tim Haley, please?
And would you unmute, please?
Yes, the, there is a deed, I don't know if it's deed restriction, deed rights or whatever, but and something in the selectmen's book. When the well was all put in and done, the town, the church would share the water in the well with the town and pay the electricity, not worry about that. And then if the repairs had to be done, the town would share the cost of the repairs. So there is something right in the deed.
Okay.
Good plan. I say we keep that original agreement and let's, let's get some prices to, to change the lines unless unless Rick Penny thinks there's something they can do.
Right. Rick, could you unmute, please?
Yeah, yeah, it's funny, Bernie, you kind of read my mind. That was gonna be the only thing I was gonna recommend. Because of the old building with the church, I would highly recommend getting somebody with a mini excavator to go around that fragile granite foundation and stuff like that for the liability. This is kind of going back to what you said about contracting with the painting. Let's take the liability out of the town's hands. If something, with a big backhoe going behind that church. And most of the problems that we've had in the past a couple of years has been mostly splices that people have put in it over the years. And we did, we worked with Isaac. We did put brass nipples in and double stainless steel clamps, but they still fail in other spots, but definitely would be the cheaper way to go instead of a well.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think the discussion is now, right now, I don't know if there's more we want to add to that at this point.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we get prices to replace the, the water lines.
Still moves.
A motion being seconded to get some bids on replacing the water line. All those in favor? Unless there's any other discussion, I think we've already.
I think we discussed it, yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Say aye, John.
Well, would I?
Let's see that guy.
Okay. Next item was discuss select board office space. Bernie?
Can we, can we pass over that for the time being until we have this workshop next week and figure out like, or this meeting next week?
Okay, you want to put it to Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, goes to Tuesday. Filling this, and I noticed, I'm sorry, I know this is on twice, but this is where I wrote it and once where you given it to me. Discuss filling select board secretary position, and then it's down here under select board office assistant, under R, M, and R. So it's really the same thing. We've been talking about filling, putting a, hiring a part-time person here in the office as an office assistant. And we were also talking about hiring a part-time person.
Where are we on that?
Well, we, we put it off at the last meeting. We were also talking about hiring a a part-time person that would be shared by the planning, the zoning, the the conservation commission and the building departments, building wiring. So those are back.
So we haven't posted anything or?
No, no, we haven't done anything with it.
Can we put those off until a meeting in, in April? I'm trying to think, when's our first meeting in April?
April 7th.
April 7th?
I think so. Let me double check, because I think that's why the the bid was due, isn't it? We're this 24th, yeah, April 7th. That's why the bids were due the April 7th for the painting.
Okay, can we move that, that to April 7th? And, and then one of the reasons is I want to try to figure out this other thing about the offices.
Okay. Okay. Let me just make a notation here.
Is that okay with you, Gary and John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Website and email issues and login problems. Lynn Nystrom is here with us, so I'm gonna unmute Lynn so she can help with, Lynn, if you could unmute yourself, please. So she could help with some of that.
Okay.
And I did get a message from our Civic Plus providers today. They've been sending messages apologizing for some problems they're having on their end. They're trying to resolve with one of their providers. I have sent them, after doing some research through our email, this is just background. The the email system that we're using is something called G Suite or Gmail Suite. I'm not sure for anymore, but it's something from years ago. It's what we started with. And it was a free service that was provided, at least to governments. It might have been provided to schools and nonprofits. It looks like it might have been nonprofits. And we could have up to 50 email addresses. And so we've never been able to get past that. And after doing some digging through it, I managed to find what looked like the email address that would tell them what the link was supposed to be, which was different than what they had for us. So I sent that off to them. And supposedly, they tried connecting it. And it still didn't work, so that's, that's what was going on with the email connection thing. And that's, that's kind of the extent of my email, you know, fancy technical knowledge for for that. Lynn could tell you more about, putting her on the spot here about, you know, what else, how else these email systems work.
So what problems are we having with the email?
Well, people are having trouble, John. Something happened a while ago, and it didn't come to my attention right away, because I don't use that system to log in the way other people do. But something happened where people who are going to the homepage and trying to log into their email on that page couldn't get a connection to it. If you go, if you go straight to, if you open a browser window and you go to, let me do this.
And John, I had that problem trying to retrieve information from, from Gmail or email, I should say, on the planning board site.
Yeah.
I couldn't get it.
Yeah. Here's our homepage. And if they went down here where it says webmail and they would click on this.
Yeah.
I give it a second, it's doing its thing, you know.
Well, you're saying it's antiquated or?
It's, I don't know, it could be it's antiquated, but this link broke. And it wouldn't go there. Now, when I do it, I don't use this link. I guess a lot of people do use this link. I don't. When I go, you know, here's, I just use a regular browser page. And I either type in Gmail and then I say, you know, Google. And up pops, you know, because it's here from the last time I used it.
That's what I use.
Yeah. Or if I've logged out, sign out. Okay. I choose the, you know, in there and I say, selectman and login. Just better login. There it goes. And it comes up. If you go back to this thing, it's still sitting here waiting. Or sometimes it pops up and it says a little white screen on a back, you know, all white, that just says it can't make the connection. Now, this is what it's been doing since I gave them the the connection for us. Before that, it was even just coming up with something in about the center here, a box that said it couldn't find the connection on it. That's, and I'm gonna stop the screen share here. So they've been trying to connect it. I don't know if it's connected to their problems with their other provider that they're working with, which apparently is affecting lots of entities, because they do like Massachusetts or most of New England. But Lynn can tell you more about where we are going with email anyways, which will do away with the Gmail system that we have. So I'll turn it over to Lynn and she can explain about that.
So right now, like you said, we're on Gmail. And we have, with, when we did the conversion and moved everybody over to Office 365, we have email available with that, and it gets, does away with a lot of the limitations that are available on the Gmail suite. Like the Gmail, you can only have so many messages. And there are some other limitations as well, but that's the biggest one. And it would coincide with our logins that we use to the computer. So everything is all built into one, and it comes with what we've already purchased, and it keeps it in a secure environment. It puts a lot of the antivirus, the phishing and that kind of stuff, it is all under Office 365, so you gain those protections as well. So we're trying to move over and convert all of our email. It's a huge project that we have to do. And we'll be moving, probably hiring a contractor to do it, who's familiar with doing or who's done it before. So that's where we're moving to anyway. And that would, we'd then, I think, be able to change that link on the bottom to go to the new server email. Which would be office.com.
The problem will be resolved shortly?
I'm not so sure that it'll be soon. Like I said, it's a really big project.
It sounds like, it sounds like we're gonna need to have a contract with somebody to do this.
We already have a contractor that we work with, with our security system that we operate, who has done it before. He's already approved vendor from the state. And, and he works with the town of Paxton as well, and has done their conversions.
Is there, there must be a fee associated with this that we're gonna have to vote on?
Yep. Yep, there is a fee.
Substantial?
About $5,000, I think, was the last quote I had gotten.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why can't we, we usually use Tech One to do a lot of our computer repairs. Why can't we ask them to take a look at this?
It's out of their scope. This isn't, this isn't the same type of thing. They do desktop support and that kind of stuff, and this is a backbone conversion. It's completely different. That would be like you as an electrician, me telling you, can you come in and do my plumbing?
Well, no. What if we don't have to go with the conversion? What if we don't just fix the system that we have now? Well, no. What if we don't have to go with the conversion? What if we don't just fix the system that we have now?
You can't. There's limitations to the system. We're at the maximum. There is no fix for Google.
Well, the problem is only stands from a bad connection.
Oh, this one, this one issue of logging in, yes. But that's not the bigger picture. That's one issue of logging in. That fixes, you go to google.com and log in.
The system that we have now has no room for growth. We're maxed. It won't hold any emails, so there's no record which we're required to keep of emails. It won't keep any more of our records. And it won't allow us to add any more email addresses into it. And so we can't include many of our employees or public officials. You know, there's just no space for them. And that means that they have to use their private email addresses in their public service.
I think we should get a second opinion.
That's okay. You can go ahead. I'm, I think I'm gonna back out at this point. I don't need to be involved in any of that. So I'm
Okay.
Going to just back out of all the technical issues with Phillipson. And it's, it's all yours.
I'm thinking Ruth has something to say, Linda, the finance committee about monies for this. Let Ruth speak first.
Okay. Ruth, would you unmute?
Yes. Okay, thank you. I guess my concern is, right now, the Board of Health does not have Office 365 because we didn't get any of the new computers that all the other departments got. We're still operating with Windows 7. I mean, Gmail seems to work fine for me right now, so that's fine. I'm just wondering, is this new platform that we're talking about, are we gonna be able to work from home and check our emails from home? Because if it wasn't for Gmail, I'm not gonna be driving up to the Board of Health. I mean, I'm checking emails seven days a week right now because I have to keep up on tap of which addresses have COVID. So I have to be able to check emails seven days a week. And I guess if this new platform, if you have to be on your office computer, that's a real hardship. You still have to be able to work from home. If COVID's taught us nothing, it's, you gotta be able to work from home.
Ruth, I just showed you, there is a way that you can just use, go to the browser, type in Gmail and still log into your account. And I can, I can write down how that works. It's the same.
No, I'm talking about Gmail works right now. I'm fine. I can check everything from home.
Yeah.
Lynn's talking about getting away from Gmail, going to something that works only through Office 365, which A, I don't have on my home computer. And B, I don't have on the Board of Health computer.
Gotcha. Okay, gotcha.
So it's okay. Let's move forward with technology. But make sure you can still do everything in your office, which I can't, and everything from your home computer. So if it's going through Office 365 and we don't have access to it, it's kind of like a
Can, will we be able to do that? Is Lynn gone? Or is she there?
No, I think she left.
I think she's gone. Wow.
Is she gone, Kevin?
She's gone.
Um.
I think she had an
Okay.
Okay, we got a couple hands up.
I see Rick. Would you unmute?
Yeah, just a quick, just a quick question. I know back a few months ago, we had a pretty good sum of money for IT work. Is that able to be used for this type of work? Or is there still some available?
I have to check and see what the balance is in there, Rick. Short answer.
What, what, what did we have? Was it like $10,000?
I mean, that was, yeah, it was like, I think we budgeted $9,500. So, you know, if we need $5,000, I'd have to check and see if we've got $5,000 left and we can use that for this person.
Okay, that was just, just a thought.
But if, you know, I don't know what, if we go out and start looking for other people and, you know, someone, I don't know what the other prices would be.
Kevin, Kevin?
Yes, yes.
I have a question. I seen something online, they raised the amount that Phillipson can get because of the CARES Act.
Yep.
To $390,000 or something like that.
Yep.
Understanding that it has to be for certain things.
Yep.
Can, can upgrading the, the system so that we can work from home qualify under that instead of?
You know, I saw that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering if we could, if we could tap into that
Yeah.
As a resource to do some of this stuff that, and I'm sorry that Lynn left because it might have been some reasonable way to get around, you know what I mean? Like when we start talking money, people get a little anxious and stuff. But anyway, if we can tap into that, is that something you can look into?
Yeah, I saw that number two, Bernie, and I had not seen any guidance yet on what the eligible uses are. But yeah, it's, I don't think they've issued yet, but it's that I'm interested in too. What can we use the money for? So that's something.
My understanding is you can get a printer and just start printing money.
Yeah, that's what they said.
A laser printer, okay.
Can you look into that anyway and see if?
Definitely, yeah. Yeah, it's something that I'm, like I said, I'm really curious to see too. I'm just, you know, we're waiting to hear from the state.
Okay.
Trying to figure it out themselves.
They probably are.
Okay, Linda, what, what did you want to add?
Linda, would you unmute, please?
Thank you. Who is the webmaster of that website?
Of the website?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I work on parts of it, but I don't really know who, if we have a webmaster per se. I think each, you know, people work on different parts of it.
I believe who is the webmaster, but I don't know who is. And I think that person could probably give you a lot of help. For starters, I also definitely hire specialists. This is, this is heavy duty. And, you know, good intention is wonderful, but this is, this is big and it involves security in the town.
Yeah.
And I also know the CARES Act, the new monies that work for all the different communities in towns. You can use it to upgrade your technology. So that should help out.
Cool.
Okay.
So Kevin, why don't you look and see if we can use some of that money for this and revisit this on the 7th of April?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay. Bulletin board. I think I sent some information out to you about this before. I've got new locks to go into the bulletin board and Rick, I asked Rick to see if he could do it. I worked on it and worked on it. I couldn't get it, but it was, the weather was pretty cold. I asked Rick to see if he could do it. Rick, could I, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Yeah, that's something I did get the locks just a couple of days ago. We will get on that very soon.
Okay.
But my, my understanding is the pumps don't hold the glass up either or the plexiglass?
Correct. I was gonna look into some, just some simple hatchback shocks, I think is what those are. To hold the glass up. I was gonna definitely take a look at that as well.
My understanding is Lyman built that?
That I'm not sure.
Well, that was my understanding. I'm not positive, but maybe you could find out from them.
Yeah, I could probably get some parts from him. Well, like I said, I think, I think just some simple hood, hood shocks for a vehicle are just the same. You just measure the length of them and it'd probably work just as well.
That's fine, but we should, we should get on that before somebody gets hurt.
Yeah, definitely. I did just find out about it a week and a half ago. We'll get on it as soon as we can.
And one more thing, Kevin, is that included in the painting work?
Painting the bulletin board, yeah. Yeah, that's, I said miscellaneous work, you know, to cover it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure because it's looking ratty.
Yeah, it is. So that's why I just put it in as miscellaneous work. You know, if I started putting in a little of this, a little of that, you know, listing it all, then the price would go up. So I just said miscellaneous associated work.
That's fine, but let's get to the safety part, those, the locks and the, the look that's like done it ASAP.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll double check with Lyman too before we change those locks. That could be a very simple key to get from him before we go through the asking of changing the locks.
Yeah, it could be.
It wouldn't hurt to stop and ask.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The next one, I think now that I'm looking at it, might be a repeat, email and setting up accounts and so on. And I think we kind of just talked through that one.
I think there might be two different minds of thought here is, is this one here, the policy on emails? Because I remember somebody mentioning something, why, why I erased those things because they're spam or something. And I think we, we gotta remind people that all our emails are public documents.
Yep.
It's best not to remove anything because as little as it seems, it might be very important later on. And that would be another reason to upgrade the system so that it can handle more emails. And then again, who has access to the emails? Let's use the, let's use the selectmen. Who has access to the selectmen's email?
I do. Because a separate one, that's the one that the secretary has always used. It says selectman@blah blah blah. When I came, that was the one that I was given.
That's, that's fine, but who else has access to it?
Just me.
Just you?
Yeah.
Shouldn't that be any selectmen?
Well, we give the selectmen each their own email accounts.
Oh, we do. I don't recall getting
Well, we're out of accounts, so that means I gotta drop somebody to put you in, Bernie.
No, no, there was an account for Kim. You could give Bernie, Kim's line. But I get very, very little email on my selectmen's email. I get all of my email basically from Mr. Flynn on my home email addresses. So the official emails from this town that I have, I get almost nothing from the town.
I don't know.
I think you have to publicize yours too for people to know. I mean, what we can do is, there's a way to connect, I've got to think how this works. See if I, I'll have to look at, there's a way to connect your name on the website to an email address. So that people can go to the selectmen's webpage and click on your name to send you email. I think you see that on other towns' websites.
But then they go to you personally?
Well, it goes to your town email, you know, if we give you a town email, or it can go to your personal email.
Okay.
I don't think you want it to go to your personal.
Well, that's what I'm trying to clean up. I'm trying to clean it so every business is business, you know, the town
Right.
Is, is, so somebody's not coming back and looking and say, oh geez, did somebody email you?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I tried to send, you know, any kind of communications with other people for town business to copy to Aaron. And if they wanted to check me out, go for it, you know, because I'm not in front of my emails, but
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So the other thing I wanted to mention is like to the boards is we gotta make sure that they don't be deleting messages that, just because they think they're not important. Okay?
I don't delete anything.
Well, I don't either, but you know, I know some people
It's a good point. It's a good point.
Yeah.
And if, and if we're using a town email, then it doesn't matter. If we're not deleting them, you know what I mean? It doesn't
Yeah.
Doesn't have any effect on anything we're doing. But I think like, like the planning board members, the FinCon members, it shouldn't be only the chairman or one person. It should be, if they're an elected official or an appointed official, they should have access to that email. And I would go one step further when we set up this new system, is that there's some type of mechanism in there that things can't be deleted. Do you know what I'm saying? So whatever somebody sends, it's always there.
Yeah, I hear you.
So.
Already, but it's not a bad idea. I mean, that's something we need to visit.
That's, that's something for that guy who was gonna set up, Lynn was talking about.
I was gonna say, this is gonna be ongoing when we fixed the problems.
Above my pay grade. That's, that's the guy who's talking about to set up the email system would do all that.
Okay.
So.
Let's
We got a couple of hands up. I'm guessing they're on the same thing. I think Tom, your hand is up before Tim. Up here, Tom.
How would you unmute, please?
Well, as usual, this is on a topic that was two topics back. You know, I can't believe, you know, you guys go through this agenda real quick and it's still, it's late. Personally, I'm asking, what is the status now of Lynn? With the comments she made, I personally drew a conclusion, but I'm curious to know what her status is now.
That's, that's interesting. I am too.
Listen, because I know emotions run high, why don't we give it a day or two and see if, you know, where she's at. She, you know, people have emotions and she probably having a hard time. Sometimes it's tough when, when you're on here and you're getting grilled, and I can understand that. But let's give her a little bit of time, see if she sends us a lot or if she continues to do it.
So to answer Tom's question, I don't think anybody knows right now.
Okay.
So, Tim Haley.
Can we do unmute, please?
It's on the emails. As far as deleting them, I know the we get advertisements, lots of advertisements to buy junk. And I delete those. I don't know, I mean, I can just throw them or whatever, but those are something, those are the only ones that I delete, ones like that. Nothing that state or anything like that, just junk. But I won't delete any more of those. And also, we did have a discussion about how, who can have access to the email. I mean, it's, if more than one person can get into it, then no one really knows who's sending what to who. If you're on the board, sure, you should be trusted enough to make sure, but that's one of those things that someone may, should be able to just look at it and like you said, not be able to delete. And, but not everybody should be able to send from that because then if you think it's coming from someone, you don't know if someone gets upset and they go in there and throw off a bunch of emails and then quit the board, you know? It's, it's a tricky thing about having, who can have access to a group email?
That's a good point. Good point. Good reason why not.
But that's just a thought. It's, it's, when you have a guy come in there, they can set us, we're going through this at work right now. We're converting our email all over and I, I know what we're going through and it's, we're setting up stuff, there's all that crazy stuff in it. So there is a big bunch to it.
That would be a good answer for whoever comes in and sets up the new you know, the new program, so to speak.
And I know people that really like to talk to you about it.
Did Tom want to speak?
Yeah, we probably cut him off soon. I got my hand up, so I might as well speak. I, Tim's right. Just recently, after a long, long time, our Uh, just recently, after a long, long time, our clerk Linda finally got an email address for the finance committee and a password to use it, and the comment was, well, let's maybe it was at the finance committee this discussion happened, or maybe it was at um the selectmen's meeting, but the comment was not to allow everybody on the committee to have access. And it pretty much boiled down to her and I. Um, and for security reasons, uh, you don't know what might happen in terms of someday a disgruntled FinCom member suddenly decides to go in and uh delete something or set up some kind of a virus. Um, I think we have to be careful about those things. And um, if if the decision is for everybody in the in on a committee to have access, uh, that's fine. If the decision is limited, that's fine too. Whatever the town decides.
Thank you. All right, where are we?
Um, okay, so.
We're at the selectmen's budget, I believe.
Yeah.
So we're going to hold this, we're saying discuss policy on email. You want to pick this up at a future date or what?
Yeah.
I think we should wait until we we figure out if we're going to get it. Yeah, well, if we're going to get a new system too, if we're going to have all new emails, then we when we when we have them set up, we can probably have a little workshop and discuss
Okay.
some of these things that we're talking about now.
Okay, got it.
While I'm still unmuted and we're talking about a new system, personally, I think our present website homepage is the most user unfriendly device that I've ever encountered in terms of um trying to navigate to find things. You know, I click more times and my my trigger finger gets so tired, I have to switch to my other hand. I think it should be totally thrown out and a whole new user-friendly um device be be used. That's just my opinion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Ke- Kevin's going to look in to see if we can get something updated with this uh, with that CARES Act money. Might be able to do something. Okay, so we're on the budget. It's it's very, I'm looking at the budget and I and I looked at it. It's very hard for me to understand because I I wasn't around last year like scrutinizing the numbers for the um for the selectmen, so I I don't have, alls I have is the um, 22 request. I don't see what happened last year.
Yes, and and I would like to see a breakdown of the why the select the selectmen needs an expense account of almost $200,000. I would like to know why.
It's all broken down there, Gerhard, when I sent you the the selectment numbers.
No, I I don't see it in there as that kind of a breakdown. I would like it separately. I can't read the form that you sent me. Terrible to read.
Well, are you talking about the one with the yellow pages?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's broken down and it shows, you know, what we used last year, what we're requesting.
It it doesn't give a good breakdown of all of the elements. It's hard to read.
Hey, Kevin, I don't have that one. I just have only uh the fiscal year 22 on it for the request.
Yeah, that's the one we've got. Yeah. In other words, wait a minute. Let me just go back.
And so that you know, I I did because I told the finance committee last week that I would send, yes, I I said that I would send them a copy because they didn't have one at the time.
Right, because it hadn't been voted. Yeah, I didn't send it on. You and I talked about that.
Well, we didn't talk about not sending them uh.
No, I didn't. It wasn't approved. I wasn't going to send an, you know, something the board hadn't approved.
You could have said draft.
Okay, I just thought that there there was like a cut a time constraint that we gave everybody else, all the other uh committees and boards and stuff that we should we we should at least uh set the the pace and not be the last guy to send it then, you know, we should be, to me, the first guys.
Well, Bernie, we're trying to do the best we can here. We're still trying to get help in the office and, you know. The reason, one reason why the wall isn't done is because we took the money we had in the grant and used it to do other people's office repairs. Bring them up to ADA standards and left this office go. So, you know, I understand it being the first in line. But I think, you know, it's like the vaccines. I don't think the president should be the first one to get the shot. He should be the last one after everybody else does.
Was he the first? Was he the first or the last?
But they go, you know, they go up first to show everybody how it doesn't hurt.
Oh, that's right. I understand. Okay.
So try and get everybody else in first.
It it's getting late and I'm looking at this. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me because I don't see the last numbers. They're having a meeting tomorrow night, the finance committee. I don't know if they're going to be looking at it tomorrow night or not.
No, I need a complaining board for tomorrow night.
Yeah, but I think the selectmen's on also, isn't it?
Oh, I didn't think so.
I think they are.
That was my understanding. Unless they moved us because they didn't get the information.
Okay, Bernie, what are you looking for then?
I'm not looking, well, I was looking for like last year's numbers and this year's, but what I would do is vote this as as a draft recommendation to the to the um to the finance committee and and let them go through it. They're better at this than I think even we are to um um, and and they can make a decision like based on on what they're looking at.
Sure, okay.
And I think line 47 should be removed. That employee recognition should be removed.
Is that a motion?
I make that motion, that that employee recognition line be removed.
I'll second that.
My reasoning being is that it was never approved by the selectmen to begin with to be in there. And it was just added through activities along the way.
It was approved last year, sir.
To be, uh, excuse me, Mr. Flynn, I'm talking. And I think there really needs to be a discussion with the selectmen and everyone involved as to why that is needed on top of the event that already has replaced the employee recognition process that goes on in town. Um, so there really needs to be discussion on that before that is added to the budget.
Well, at this time, um, we are submitting the budget, so if you want to have that removed, you have, you can. I don't think we have time to um have like a special meeting to discuss it.
Is it, is everything, are are you okay with everything else letting the finance committee like go through it again?
I think the finance committee should go through it before we vote on this thing.
So we're sending them the draft with with removing, you made a motion, I I seconded to uh remove the employee uh recognition.
Yes, please.
So um, I have a motion.
Gentlemen, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chairman, can you see the screen right now that says FY 2021?
No. It's not on my screen.
Okay, wait a sec, please.
Not on mine either.
It says what?
FY 2021. Excuse me a sec.
The top is missing on mine.
It doesn't matter. I'm asking to remove that line.
You said you didn't see it. It wasn't approved, but I've got it here from last year. So I'm trying to.
It doesn't matter. There is no.
What was the evidence of the last year? What's the evidence of this year?
Okay, here's last year's. Department 122 Select Board. Here's the numbers. Employee recognition, $1,500. It was in last year what we submitted to the to the finance.
There is no record in the minutes of the select board having approved that budget.
Hello? Well, I don't see what they have to do.
Board went over the budget and nobody objected to it.
That's because it was stuck in.
We're moving forward now. Can I what? There's a motion to remove that line and it was seconded.
Yeah, I got my.
Tom Specter would like to speak and also Linda Ellis.
All right, go ahead, Tom. John, tell them to check it. Tom. Did your hand up again for a reason?
I don't know. To- Tom left too.
I don't know. Left here from Linda then. No, Tom's still there.
Tom's here. He's right there.
Maybe he stepped away.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay.
That's my call. Um, well, I I personally think there's a lot of adjustments to be made here. Um, and if you're going to send this over as a draft to the finance committee, I am requesting as chairman to also send over the FY 21 uh, selectmen's uh um, budget so that we can make comparisons from last year. Um, you know, just personally and looking at this and then looking at the shopping list of people that need to be added to the employee rule, um, my question is who's going to pay for it? Is it going to come out of the selectmen's budget? Uh, how many monies for this person that's going to be shared with departments, et cetera, et cetera? And there's some big dollar items. I start adding them up in my mind and I question whether we need those and if we can become more efficient and more um work harder, um, that maybe we can um come up with some creative ideas to become more transparent in terms of what's going on.
I think that's a good suggestion, Tom. I think that we should send over that and then.
And FY 21.
Yes.
That's fine. I don't see a problem with having last year's sent to you.
And we may not, I'm I'm telling you right now, John, uh, Linda told me that you mentioned to her that you wouldn't be at tomorrow night's meeting.
No, I sent you both an email.
Well, I I can't access my email when the Zoom's on, so um, maybe I need an IT director.
You need someone.
Hi, so I I think maybe we'd still like to discuss it a little bit, but I'm not much in favor of putting it off very far.
No, no, you guys can have a meeting tomorrow.
I'm trying to keep faith in the other two members to work on this um, our budget. I just want to be sympathetic to your needs, John, and I know you told me, and unfortunately, we had to do it. April 1st is is the night of your regional meeting. Um, and it and so, um, like I said.
Tomorrow night.
If we're with the other guys talking about it, we'll do it.
Tomorrow night I have meetings with the auditors and I'm on the executive committee. I, you have to be there.
Yeah, oh, no, I appreciate that. I don't need, knowing you, John, I don't need any explanation for you not being there. Um, man to man.
Anyway, I I think you're um, you're supposed to have the last year's budget sent to you. I I I would, I would have thought you hadn't, but I think it's a good idea to make sure you do have one.
Okay, Paul Beloit would like to speak.
I don't have a problem.
Would you um unmute, please?
I just did. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, the the schedule that Tom requested, he should not only get the 21 budget, but the 21 actuals. It's one of the best places to look at when you're going to look at this year's budget.
Um, the actuals are on the website um through February right now.
Um. Right, but is it on, is it on a schedule that could be compared against the budget, like while they're putting and looking at the 2022 budget? You shouldn't have to go to three different places to look at things.
Hmm, well, we do the best we can, Paul. Um, what's on the on the website is the accountant's report of expenditures.
So I don't see the need for us as a select board to vote if we're sending you over a draft. So I think that we've taken care of Q. And we said R was already dealt with, you want to move to S?
Yeah, and S also was going to go to April 7th. R and S, I think, were were being held off. And then T was being postponed. The senior tax work off credit rate was supposed to go to 1350. Bernie asked to hold off on it. Um, I think after the last meeting, I sent you all a copy of the state law. Um, there was a question about whether there is a cap by law on the rate, and I sent you a copy of the section of the state law that caps it at the minimum wage rate.
And 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 um, and I did see that, Kevin. You sent that to me. I looked it up. It's correct. So I would say if if we're going to do a a rate, we we have to do the the minimum rate. I don't know why we have to vote on it if it's a state law, but um.
Yeah, the board needs to set the rate for the year.
Then why don't we just vote on it to uh, you know, to make it official?
Just don't use the state rate?
Yep, well, we have to use the state minimum. That's what it says in the state regulations. I read it, uh, Gerhard. I was actually surprised.
Well, how low is that number?
It's whatever the minimum uh wage is.
Yeah, but do we know what it is? 725 or whatever?
$13.50 per hour.
How much?
1350 per hour.
Thank you.
And it's only a credit against the taxes, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Hey, Bernie, just out of curiosity, could you turn your speakers a little, like 90 degrees, see if that might stop the back uh?
What what's happening? Tell me so I can understand better.
You sound fine to me.
Well, well, when you're not talking, we can hear whoever's talking in um, not on your thing uh reverberating through your speakers back into our speakers.
You you think, hold on, let me. Can you still hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. Maybe I need a hearing aid.
I don't know. I don't, maybe I do because I don't see any problem.
I can still hear a little bit, but very, very faint now. It's a lot better.
Anyway, um.
Do I hear a motion to uh change that or set that rate?
Just set the rate at 1350 an hour. That's a motion for me.
Second.
If the motion is seconded, set that rate, all those in favor, say aye.
Fan dryer, aye.
Yellow would aye.
Let's see that guy. But Paul, did you have more to add?
Give me a sec. I'm just marking this. Just a sec.
I don't think it's about that rate.
Actually, I don't see him now. Wait a minute.
He's there. He's, he's on my screen.
His hand is down. Did he, Paul, did you, could you?
Maybe it was up from before.
No, I was just, I was just, I had a question. When I made that other statement, why was I muted before I could finish the conversation?
I didn't realize you were.
It just happens.
It just happens?
Go ahead. What do you got to say?
Nope, I'm all set.
All right, where are we now?
Okay, you're down to the last.
School updates.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything more to say about the school at this at this point. I think we've talked about it in a couple of different places, so. No more. Okay.
And it's 9:37.
It's 9:37.
So, um, I'm not sure. Are we having an executive uh session tonight?
I think it's too late.
I was going to entertain a motion to adjourn, but Tom got his hand up, I think.
Okay. Okay. Tom, would you unmute please? Here we go.
Uh, I just wanted to respond to Paul and, and tell him from experience, uh, it's typical to be cut off before you were done with your thought. So, you know, that's, that's, you know, it's all electronics and needs to be addressed with the IT person. It's probably an electronic glitch, you know, might have been a little short somewhere, um, so.
Could be the wind, you know, temperature change, you know, temperature change affects electric lines.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's made, seconded.
Adjourn.
All of the favorites, aye.
Aye. Malo would aye.
Fan dryer.
Thank you.